Close, I don't want to add.
All right.
You just gotta wait for Zoe.
Well, that's right, we don't have a quorum yet.
We don't have a quorum. She was just here for the lot of board meetings.
Hope you adjusted your watch. But Texas is what?
There she is.
Two hours to it.
One hour.
It's only one hour?
Central.
All right, there she is.
Okay, quick first thing, before we even begin, have you already began?
No.
No, we had to wait for you.
Okay, Brad reached out to me, he is having trouble because he's trying to join, and he's in Canada, and there's a rejection notice coming up, and I Googled it a few minutes ago, and it says, if you can join a Zoom meeting from Canada, the most likely reason is the host has enabled the approver block entry from users for specific countries and regions setting. I think this is because we are having all those people Zoom in and like Zoom bomb us, if they're like in India, et cetera.
But you have a quorum.
Do we want to try to figure out that setting?
We have a quorum, I think we should let him be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you let him know that you're okay.
Okay, because we have a quorum, I just wanted to like check in on that, he is here, I will help him now, but he is free.
Thank you, okay, so shall I begin?
Yeah, because I think that that's like a gen question, and it probably is like a higher admin level of settings, so, and I understand why she said it, and it probably is why we're not getting Zoom bombed, so I'll reply now.
Okay, good, great. So I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Shatsbury Select Board on Monday, November 17th, 2025, at Coldwall on our Zoom. I'm Naomi Miller, the Vice Chair of the Shatsbury Select Board, our Chair is on Zoom, and we will be co-facilitating this meeting. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda?
No.
No.
No. The minutes. Okay, and I have a motion to approve minutes of Monday, November 3rd, 2025.
Some move.
Seconded. Thank you, Zoe. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, or changes?
No.
No.
Okay, all in favor of passing them as they are?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, announcements and updates.
I have two announcements.
Thank you. You have two announcements?
I have two announcements.
Quorum.
One is a, you know, tidings of, good news.
Oh, good.
We ordered the floors for the new building just a few weeks ago, and it was going to be eight to 10 weeks, and they're already in, Bennington House of Tile, they're already in. So tentative start of putting the floors in is January 12th, which is a Monday, and then interim, we're going to get all the wiring done, and the walls figured out, and then, once those floors are in, it'll be painting and off to the races, so we're getting really close, so that was good news.
Can I jump in then?
Yes.
And when we're ready to do the painting, we are going to renew that call out to citizen volunteers to get their paintbrushes and rollers and get to work.
People have been asking, yeah.
And I know some people are jumping at the bit, ready to do it, actually. So we're thinking it's probably going to be a post-New Year's celebration.
Yes. Because it would be nice to get it painted before the floors get in.
Yeah, we'd love to.
You can be messy.
Paint up before we put in those floors, so that we don't have to clean the floors.
Exactly.
Yeah, good deal.
Yeah, so that's good news, and we're moving right along. The other announcement is that the Holiday Tractor Parade is a go, and we're going to have an updated flyer online and around town that has the correct message, it's holiday, and it has the correct address, because Peckham reached out and said, hey, you have the wrong address, where the trucks are lining up, so we're making those modifications, and we'll be putting it back online. But it is happening this Saturday after Thanksgiving, I don't know the date because I didn't write it down.
Twenty twenty nine.
Twenty nine, thank you.
Twenty nine?
Twenty nine, thank you, I knew everyone would chip in.
You might, you make, you can put down in Iowa an address, but if you put Daily Scale House, everybody knows where that is.
Okay, I got the email from Peckham, and she's like, could you please change the address? Yeah, okay. I will write that down.
And we did want to clarify that it's...
Yeah, it's holiday.
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday parade, you know, they went out with Christmas, but it...
In keeping with all the other hardships, it's a holiday, who's a holiday lights parade?
Yeah, I can't wait.
We look forward to joining Greenwich, and one day perhaps we will match them.
It'll be our inaugural event, I'm very excited. That's it for announcements and updates.
Okay, warrants. It's been a while since I did this, Zoe.
I know.
Okay.
I will be honest, it is literally my least favorite part of the entire role, because I don't like reading out the numbers.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Read out the amount.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to approve check warrant report number 26011 for a total of sixty seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety three cents?
Some move.
Thank you, Tony.
Seconded.
Thank you, Zoe. Okay. Items over a thousand, we have the Sheriff's Department, eight thousand and twenty dollars.
That's actually September contract, because we forgot to pay them for September, but we paid it for October, we're squared up now.
And they didn't mind.
Well, they, hey, we sent the invoice, we got you, so we're getting caught up with that.
Great.
Oops.
Bennington Tire, four thousand six hundred and forty one.
Fire truck, yeah, yeah, expensive, you guys okayed it last meeting?
Yes, we did. GA Bov for one thousand fifteen dollars and one cent.
Which one are they on, GA Bov? Both. DPW Fuel.
Great. At Random, Crisobie Getty?
Oh, that's our cleaner, so it's for Coal Hall and the DPW cleaning services.
Okay, that's two hundred and two hundred.
Yeah.
Greater Heights for three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, is that the...
Ash Tree.
Tree, you were just telling us about the Ash Tree in Maplewood.
Maplewood Cemetery.
Great. HL Gauge Sales for two thousand one hundred and three and ninety cents.
Truck parts.
Truck parts, thank you, Mike. MNT Bank for two thousand eight hundred and sixty four and ten cents.
That is the Town Credit Card, all sorts of things on it.
Everything.
Web things, operating supplies, we had a couple new laptops we had to get, got them super on sale, auditors needed one, so they could do their jobs, Joe Vatican needed one.
Great. Okay. MVP Healthcare, sixteen thousand five hundred and seven forty one cents.
Employee health insurance.
Employee health insurance. And Nimerick for seven thousand seven hundred and fifty.
That's the November reappraisal fee.
Okay, RCS Consulting, one thousand six hundred and seventy five forty five.
Monthly network support.
Network support?
Yep.
Shatsbury Fire Company, one thousand three hundred and twenty four sixty five.
Training supplies.
You like that?
Mm-hmm.
And wholesale distributors for two thousand eight hundred and twenty.
Culverts, right, Mike?
Yeah, that was an old invoice that got missed, but it was for culverts for the summer.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor of approving these?
Aye.
Aye.
Zoe, you'll have to sign when you get back, so we have three signatures tomorrow.
Yeah, I think I'll be back tomorrow afternoon, so maybe, I'll schedule it, I'll come back.
Okay, is there another one?
Payroll. Thank you.
Not that it's like anybody's concern, but I went to visit my mom, and in classic fashion, my flight was canceled in the most brutal way, and I tried to do like an eighteen-hour, two-day trip instead, and then I was like, well, I have to go to these meetings, I have to stay an extra day, anyway, visited, you know, don't visit your mom, I guess.
Lesson learned.
Right.
At least you had a place to stay. Yes.
Yes, yes, it was where you stayed, and I was like with my mother, so...
Do extra nights in a hotel. Okay, I have your check warrant report number PR10, for a total of twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty cents.
Some move.
Thank you. Zoe, can I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comments. I think the public here are on the agenda. We have no treasures to report because...
She's out of town.
She's out of town.
We can do it next time.
And now for the DPW report, we have Mike here. Do you want to pull up one of those chairs?
Yeah, that's where I am. Hello.
Thank you for coming to...
No problem. Obviously, this time of the year, we're not doing a lot on the roads, but we are getting ready to maintain the roads for the winter, so we're putting together all the plow trucks and servicing all of our equipment and getting that all up to snuff for the upcoming months.
Did a good job on the bridge, by the way. Yes.
That was a very fun project.
That was great.
Beautiful job.
Came out good, that's what I'm actually been working on, in the mix of everything, is getting that all submitted, so we can get reimbursed and all the funding back, so you should see that come back within the next couple months.
Good.
Yeah, we did, we did everything in-house, so it actually paid for our payroll for the month of September, I mean, it will, so that will help. I mean, obviously, the, there's still a match with that, it's still an eighty-twenty or ninety-ten, I forget exactly which one that, I think the structure is ninety-ten, so there's still ten percent that we have to make up anyways, but we did save a lot of money doing it in-house, and it was, the guys really enjoyed it too, because they got to do something different, and we were still grading roads and maintaining stuff, so it worked out well, it did. And we have a smaller project like that on Murphy Hill next year, not as big, it'll be a small road closure, probably maybe, maybe two weeks at the most, for another grant that we got to replace a pipe out there too, so that'll be, that'll be next summer.
Great.
We're gonna, we'll be out and about, we're not going to be grading any more roads for this season, just because obviously the weather's changing, but there are some sections that need to be touched up, so you probably will see the graders out and about, just cleaning up some sections that need to be touched up, and hope they freeze and last. But right now, all the guys are working on getting everything, all their equipment ready for when we do need to use it. We did have to do a little salting today, but that was just up on Buck Hill and East Road, nothing really bothered on the dirt roads, just the pavement. We'll be starting probably after Thanksgiving, we're hoping to start working on some of the Emerald Ash Board problem on Maple Hill, so we picked a section in the committee, and has done a lot of work to reach out to the property owners and stuff, so we will see us out there taking down ash trees and other hazard trees in that section. That section is from Cider Mill Road to Jack Cross on Maple Hill, so we'll be working out there as we can throughout the winter. But other than that project, it'll be plowing snow and maintaining the roads for the winter.
May the plowing not start.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if winter's going to come, let's let it come, and maybe it'll end early, have an early spring.
Yeah.
Be nice.
I don't know, the earliest Wausau Tire appointment for snow tires right now is December fifteenth, so I'm pushing a little bit for...
Yeah.
A late start.
You waited a little too long.
I know, I made a very rookie mistake.
Live and learn.
Yep.
Thanks, anybody have...
Does anyone have any questions or anything?
No.
No.
Thanks a lot.
You're sticking around. You're sticking around.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, number nine, Tim Scoggins and Nick Ziyak, thank you for being here to talk about Act 181, 181 Tier 1B exemptions to Act 250 review. Want to pull up?
So I guess by way of introduction, I'm Tim Scoggins, this is Nick Ziyak from VCRC, and if you watch any news at all, or read the van or anything, you probably know that one of the biggest problems that we face in Vermont and across the nation is housing, and that there's been a lot of activity in the State House relative to that, to try and figure out how to increase the housing stock for people, so that we have workforce housing, and just, you know, so people can live indoors. And one of the things that came down from the legislature relatively recently, I think...
Yeah, the last two years.
Last two years, was this Act 181, which was a modification of Act 250, which is our big land use, all-encompassing legislation that a lot of people say is why Vermont is Vermont, it's all about controlling growth and preserving the landscape. 181 had some provisions in it to increase our ability to build housing, and one of the things it does is, under certain conditions, it provides an exemption to the Act 250 process, which a lot of people find burdensome, a lot of contractors find burdensome. Having just been appointed to the Act 250 Commission in our area, I've been hearing a lot about that, and a lot of the Act 250 people would take a section to that, and would say that, in fact, Act 250 process can get, you get through relatively quickly, but a lot of the steps in the Act 250 process require permits from A&R, you know, if you want to check the wastewater box on the Act 250 process, you get your A&R permit for your wastewater, and that can take a long time sometimes, but that's what the Act 250 people would say anyway, but at least there's this perception that Act 250 is a burden in certain circumstances, and so this Act 181 is to allow exemptions to that, particularly for building multifamily housing. And is that a good place for you to cut off?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great introduction to this, so, so the slides I have will give you a little bit more of what you can do to participate in this process, and so if you want to kick two slides ahead. So Tier 1B is, as Tim explained, it's an exemption from this regional-level Act 250 review for housing projects of less than fifty units on less than ten acres of land, and as you noted, it is a process that can slow the process down more than anything, and also add costs. What this will do will be, make it so your municipal permits are the primary driver of the permitting for a project, rather than having a second layer of view, with Tim looking at it, to give it, to make sure it meets the regional standards. So these are projects the legislature has already agreed, that if they meet a certain criteria, and the town opts in for these, you can remove the Act 250 process from these particular housing projects. So some criteria on where this can happen, it has to be on an area that has water sewers or good septic soils, can't be in the river corridor or the floodplain, and it must be in what are called designated village centers and village areas or downtowns. And then I'll note that you can, you can apply it to only some of your centers, if you have multiple ones like Shatsbury does. So we'll get to some maps in a moment, but you have to have zoning, you have to have staff time to be able to administer this, so a really small town couldn't opt in, but a town your size, that's what this law was aimed to make, like make Tier 1B viable for, so, yeah, so if you want to pop to the next one. So here is the map of the areas that the Planning Commission has recommended, we map for Tier 1B status, so that is South Shatsbury Village with the, with its expanded from its previous iteration to meet current state mapping criteria, and then the area around Twitchell Hill, that's on the water system, and then the area adjacent to North Bennington, that's on the North Bennington Water System, but, but one of those, so most of this is mapped for the criteria being water system, but suitable soils, which underlie almost all of this, are also the acceptable criteria, so you have kind of two of the three, which is always a good thing for, if you're hoping for some development to happen. So, so, yeah, and I'll note, it is carved up a little bit because of the river corridor for Perrin Creek, that's why there are a couple of areas right down around the mill, or the old Burnski Display Building, that couldn't be included, but the rest of the property is, for instance, so this area would be very much in the area, so.
So just maybe to help people get oriented there, the purple, the dark purple, is the village, this is Shatsbury Village Center, and then the light pink to the left of it is Twitchell Hill, and then the light pink at the bottom right on the border between us and North Bennington is the area of like Lamb Road and Hawks Road and in there, essentially the areas of high-density housing that we have in the very south, and in the village, and along Twitchell Hill.
And, and the next couple of slides will also have some satellite images that take off of this, this future land use layer, so if you want to kick to the next one, here's a close-up of this northern of the two areas, you'll see all of the built-up area of the village, and all of the built-up area of Twitchell, and the, the boundaries are also set to be all of a, the, all of a parcel, so they, you'll cap, we're trying to capture all of the backyards and things like that, that would matter for this, so, and then if you want to kick to the next one, we have, that's, we have a close-up of the southern area, and so these are the areas that we're proposing to add this exemption to. If you want to kick forward to the next one, I'll note that you could opt in to the Shatsbury Center area, we are not recommending that forward, this is your full town's future land use map, as currently exists, if you want to click to the next one, here's the...
Can you just back...
Yeah.
Pause for a second and tell us why you're not recommending that?
So actually, this slide has it, so we, we looked at this, a lot of this is, there's not a lot of development potential there, because there's no utilities, and a lot of the good septic soils are under existing preserved farmland, so even if we wanted to map it there, you wouldn't really expect much to happen because of the amount of preservation there, so one of the things that shaped, what made this map, was us looking at what's in current use, to show active farms and active forestry operations, and then what's in conservation, to show what's already been locked up, so, so that's also a historic area, it's far from many other services, so, and your zoning has not historically zoned for extra density there, we look at your local zoning as part of consideration of this, to guide where you have conceived of development happening, so this was certainly a, an area that has a lot of important historic resources, and that's why this center seems to exist, but, but as the center designation has changed in its purpose over time, from being mostly about directing tax credits, which mattered a lot more for historic preservation projects, to being associated with housing development, some of these centers don't make sense anymore for the future purposes of the center, centers that we have.
The consensus on the Planning Commission was that nobody was going to want to build multifamily housing in historic Shatsbury Center, it's, it's listed, I think, at least it was when I was on the Select Board, as a village center area.
Yes.
Because it was, it's historically a village center area, but it's different from the others that we've talked about here that are currently high-density housing.
Yeah, and I will note that on that bit, this kind of top, this item of centers, every town will get a center now, this will look a lot more like the village center that exists in, say, Sandgate or Rupert, where there may be, there's a there there, there's a town hall, there may be some cemeteries or a church, but there's not a lot of future development potential, but every, but as part of the Act 181 legislation, every town, I will note, except for in extenuating circumstances, Glastonbury, does not have a town center, so, or has a town center unless you're a Glastonbury, so, so, yeah, that's, that's the gist of this, so the next steps, which is my next slide, is what you guys can do, is we prepared a resolution for, to affect this, to opt in for the recommended areas by the Planning Commission, and if you want, you can make a motion to, to opt in as presented, or to pass the resolution as presented, and I'll note it would become active in the middle of 2026, when the regional plan is adopted, and I have the list of the neighboring, the other towns in the county that are expecting to opt in, or have opted in to Tier 1B by now, so Manchester has just opted in, Doris is going for it tomorrow, so...
You read it, I read it.
So, yeah, if you have any other questions.
It's probably worth mentioning just a little bit about the process that we're, we're participating in here, Act 181 dictates that the Planning Commission, the Regional Planning Commission, shall create these future land use maps, which is what we were just looking at, where the Planning Commission, in consultation with the local people and with some added intelligence, tries to figure out where zoning might change, you know, how land use might change as population grows or diminishes or whatever, and so as part of the regional plan being created and adopted, right now, as if we opt in during this regional plan creation, then we have this opportunity to, to create this situation where multifamily housing can be created in these designated village center or village areas with just our local zoning in charge, and not with the state level. with just our local zoning in charge and not with the state level Act 250 process on top of that.
So can I have a motion and then we can discuss? So can we put Zoe back on the screen?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We can't see, that's all.
Yeah, we can't.
We hope you heard all that.
I did hear all of that.
I can see her.
And I saw all of it too.
All right, let me just text these out.
It's just I want her to be able to make.
And we'll take this presentation.
There she is.
Just to be clear, and we'll share it with Mike and Brad as well. We'll get this forward along to them just so that they see what was in consideration this evening.
Okay, so we have.
Second, I mean.
A motion. And can we have a second, Zoe?
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay.
To adopt the resolution.
So discussion, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea.
Think it's a great idea.
Yeah. 250.
Yeah, which for me, map looks good.
Go ahead.
I'm very grateful for the help in understanding it.
And I should mention that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And also to the work that these officers are doing.
I should mention, and this is the main reason I'm here, is that the Planning Commission passed a motion in their last meeting recommending that the Select Board opt in to Tier 1B exemptions, as you're about to do, I hope.
Thank you. And we didn't mention that Tim is now the chair of the interim, an interim member replacing Nancy Burns until her return with the Planning Commission, and in that time he is serving as the chair.
Yes.
Thank you for that, Tim.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Okay, all in favor of adopting this municipal resolution?
All right.
I.
I. Great. Great, I think. Thank you.
Yeah, just one signature on it. So we don't, because it'll, it'll appear in the minutes, we only need the one.
Okay.
And then Paula can scan that over to me tomorrow and we'll, we'll be good to go. You're the second of our hopefully five towns topped in, so congratulations.
Oh, who'd be this?
Manchester, but they were really, really like chomping at the bit. Like they're a month or more ahead of everyone else. Yeah. So they got to be our guinea pigs, but I appreciate this. And yeah, and if you have any follow up questions after this, I'm easy to reach. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nick. And thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that there's, uh, we're lucky here that we have actually an entity, Cornerstone Housing, which is interested in building multifamily housing in Shaftesbury, particularly on the lot here at, at Cole Hall. And related to that is the sewer study that we have done and some other items that the Planning Commission is considering to help facilitate, facilitate that. One of the first ones that needs to happen that Paula pointed out to me is that we have the sewer study at what's called a 60% report, where they have worked it up to a certain point and are wanting to present it to the town, to the Sewer Committee. And I think it would be helpful if we could schedule that meeting to include zoning and Planning Commission and Sewer Committee and Select Board. As many as would be convenient to kind of get everybody in the same room and on the same page relative to what, what our possibilities are here with Cornerstone and what, what the necessary steps might be to, to facilitate that.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a, it's a great, great idea. A kind of ad hoc committee of representatives from the various components of the town government that will be involved in this.
Yeah, well, really just all, all the town committees that have a piece of the, of the pie that really, you know, are going to be participating in the process of getting this through, should we, you know, should that happen. The sewer study is a good place to kind of focus our attention in the near term. So I think probably the, the next thing to do would be to, maybe for me to talk to Dave Mance on the Sewer Committee and see when it might be a good time to get together. Maybe, I don't know if we want to do it at a Select Board meeting or before a Select Board meeting or on a different day of the week.
So if I can chime in on this, because your neighbors still north are giving the same thing like two weeks from now. And they're doing it as a special meeting of the Select Board. As a just invite all the planning people, invite, invite the, and have it be it, that have the entire Sewer Committee or, and the Select Board there and then any other planning type people who might be interested. But extending the invitation broadly and making sure it's a public meeting so that, so that you can start showing the public what you're trying to do and, and help it, and clear some of the, the wondering that has been happening since whenever you started the wastewater study, which was probably years ago at this point. So, so yeah, that, that's what they're doing.
Are you interested in media?
Yes, Arlington is, has it scheduled for, I don't know, I, I have it in my text, but it's, I think it's like two Mondays from now or something like that. But yeah, tune in on Zoom if you want a preview, I guess.
So maybe a Monday that is not a Select Board meeting would that be a possibility? Uh-oh, Tony can't come.
I think a special meeting makes sense.
Yeah, in December.
December?
Yeah.
It should be soon.
Yeah, the, the, Dufrane has been waiting to present this to us, so we should, we should not put them off any more than we have to.
Okay.
So that means.
I'll look at the town calendar and see what Monday is available.
So we've got the Select Board meeting on the first and then we have one on the 15th, so there's the Monday.
So the.
In between.
In between.
Are you on the website, Zoe?
And then there are other days of the week.
They post different.
Are you looking at the town calendar, Zoe?
No, I'm looking at the, the eighth.
I just want to, I know if someone else has a meeting that night, that's all. Someone has to look at the town calendar.
Well, I've got the town calendar on.
Oh, okay. Thank you. It's a rescue.
Good for you.
Let's see.
Uh, no, there's a Democratic Caucus meeting on Tuesday.
But nothing on the eighth?
Yeah, we can meet on Monday, the eighth.
Good. Okay, let's do that.
There's that thing on the town calendar. Yeah, that's in between the two Select Board meetings.
Okay, so. Do you want to review again who you were suggesting be at that meeting?
Well, certainly the Sewer Committee, the Planning Commission and the Select Board.
The zoning administrator.
It would be good if she could get there. She's, only has one kid on each arm. If she has a third kid, then she's, she's too busy, yeah.
Okay. And, okay, we'll find out who else.
Economic Development, maybe?
And maybe a VCR.
But it's a Select Board meeting, so yeah, I guess.
I'll try to be here on behalf of VCRs and for that.
Oh, great, thanks, Nick.
This is a matter of very serious regional significance.
Yes, and we have not gotten word out about it adequately, so that's great. Okay.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Community appropriation request from Erin Wavovitz and Alyssa Del Tufo from Power and Recreation. Welcome, have a seat.
If I send you, we have a very short set of photographs and some words. If I send it to you, will it, you can show it on the screen?
Um, I think so. It might take a few minutes on email, but I can pull it up.
I wasn't sure how you did it the other.
That's okay.
I'm trying it. There you go. And we can just say thank you for giving us time to talk to you folks. We appreciate it. We like seeing that photograph, that painting on the wall right there. And we are, we, we receive funds from Shaftesbury every year for which we are grateful. And we are sort of reconfiguring how we work at Lake Perrin, including the work that we're doing to try to save the lake from being completely taken over by invasive weeds. Which is the main reason why we wanted to come tonight, to just share a brief presentation and sort of discussion about what we're trying to do and to try to both inform you about that and ask for some financial support if possible for the work that we've been doing.
Hasn't come through yet.
Hasn't come through.
No.
Well, we can show it this way, but no one else will get to see it.
Can you save it on a flash drive?
I don't know. My damn machine doesn't do that anymore.
I'll just keep an eye on it.
Okay. So, and so I'm Alyssa Del Tufo and I'm the Chair of the Board.
And I'm Erin Wavovitz and I'm the Director at Lake Perrin.
So we've been, I, I guess I'll just give a little history of what we've been trying to do. There's a slide for it, but we'll just, I could just talk about it. I've been the Chair of the Board for 20 years and, and for 15 of those years, I was, I met with the State Department of Environmental Conservation because, as you probably know, the state controls all water in Vermont. And to do anything with the water or in the water, you need permits from the state to do it. So in the, in 1979, when the new dam was built at the, you know, far end of the creek, the water level in the lake was lowered three feet permanently. So they drained the entire lake, they rebuilt the dam, but when they re, when they put the water back in, it was three feet lower than it was originally, which changed the whole ecosystem in the lake, allowed more light, light to filter into the lake, which meant that the weeds were able to grow in different depths, much more prolifically. And also the silt coming in from the upper Perrin Creek, some of which was dailies washing gravel in Perrin Creek for many, many years until the state stopped them from doing that. So this sort of very unhealthy cycle started where the silt came in and raised the bottom of the lake by silting in, the weeds started growing, the weeds catch more silt. So it's this kind of weird domino effect. So the lake has changed a lot in the last, well, certainly since 1980, you know, when the dam was completed in terms of the, the health of the water, the depth of the lake and the amount of weeds that are in the lake that really interfere with people using it recreationally, both from swimming and fishing and boating. And at the far side of the lake, the eastern shore of the lake, where the stream comes in, the water depths are between six and 10 inches now. Whereas I talk to people who grew up here, so there are people that were kids in like the 50s and 60s who say that the neck was 10 feet deep. So there's been a huge change in, in the ecosystem of the lake. No, didn't come through?
It came through, but it's a Google slide.
Oh, and you can't open that?
It won't open.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to show you some pretty pictures anyway. Because, you know, Lake Perrin's so beautiful. I don't know if you can see that up there on the screen, but. So basically what we're.
You're muted, Zoe.
Yeah, I said very minimally, but I will, we'll check it out.
I'll send, we'll send it to you and you can, and you can see it.
Take a look later this week.
So we, we are really trying to save the lake. And although we feel like we've taken leadership on that, that it is a resource for this entire area here. And people use the lake pretty much every single day of the year, either swimming and fishing or boating and ice fishing, right? I mean, it's, it really is very well used. And the idea of losing this natural resource makes our hearts break. And I think many people in the area feel that way as well. So we've been tracking our guests for decades. Now, that's not everyone that uses the lake. Not everyone comes through our parking lot and down the hill. They will come from the other side, et cetera. But the folks that come through Perrin Recreation's property, the breakdown is basically about half of our guests are from Bennington and the other half is, is almost an equal split between North Bennington and Shaftesbury. And again, we don't know the folks that come in the winter and ice fish. That's also probably a similar mix of, of people. So we are trying to galvanize the, this larger community to be interested in saving the lake and to help us pay for saving the lake. Because what we did was we, well, you know about the history. And you know that the Perrin watershed is all up in the hills up here and all that water flows into Lake Perrin and then flows out through the Mill Pond and down through Paper Mill Village. And when Irene hit in 2018, is that 2018? The flooding downstream was profound. And one of the issues about the lake is that it's a reservoir that holds back water from flooding downstream. And so part of what we're interested in is protecting the downstream communities from future flooding. And the, but the other issue is to really keep it as a vibrant recreational area for everyone in our region. So we have the issue of trying, so I guess I'll back up for a second. So two years ago, I was, I met with the state for 15 years in a row, 15 summers in a row, and tried to convince them to give us a permit to do something to remediate the weeds in the lake. Two years ago, they finally agreed to let us do weed removal from the lake. There are various ways that people try to fix the weed problem in their lakes. And some have to do with chemical, you know, basically poisons, although they've adapted those poisons to be as minimally damaging to other parts of the lake as possible. But we decided that the most, the, the way that our community could tolerate us taking out the weeds was basically to, to harvest them. And so we raised a bunch of money. We raised $110,000 and bought this boat, our WeDo boat, which is a cool boat. And it's designed for lakes our size. There, there's an old version of these boats, which are like as big as this building and really work in the Great Lakes, but not on a small, on a 40 acre lake like we have. So the, the state finally gave us the permit. We had to go through a whole process of doing watershed mapping and they gave us a permit for taking weeds out of approximately seven acres of the water, which is very clearly marked. And we, actually a Shaftesbury resident is our boat driver, a licensed driver for this machine. And now for two summers has taken weeds out of the lake.
How effective has that been?
How?
How effective?
Well, you know what? Way more than we actually thought. Because we were, we knew we wanted to do this because it was the only thing we could do, but we weren't really sure. It is like mowing your lawn. I mean, I do have to say that it's not a permanent solution to the problem. But what it does is that it kicks back the weeds enough that the silting seems to have slowed down. The weed growth seems to have been tamped back a little bit. And it certainly has made people's utilization of the lake a lot more, you know, healthy and positive. I mean, people get caught in the weeds. I mean, people couldn't boat to the far edge of the, I mean, Erin knows, Erin boats out there every day. So you can talk about what it was like.
It's like paddling on carpet oftentimes in the middle of the summer in July. Yeah, that neck for sure.
Yeah.
Thick. And you can't get the weed boat back into that spot, but.
But we can create a lane, like a channel with the way it's mapped, which I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of that. But the, we can map the area where people traditionally swim all the way across to the dam so that, because people boat across and swim across. And then a lane all the way down to the eastern edge and kind of like a bigger area in there. That's what we're allowed to do. And like I said, it's not a permanent solution, but it is slowing down the other issues and, which is basically the silting problem. And the issue for us is that if we don't do this, we have less time to try to get other remediation practices done, which is basically going to have to be dredging. At some point, if we want to really keep this lake as a viable natural resource here, there's going to have to be dredging of the far, of the neck to increase the water flow, to pull out some of the silt and to get the water moving faster, which will decrease the silting and decrease the weeds. But that's, we're nowhere near that right now. We just have to keep. But that's, we're nowhere near that right now. We just have to keep trying to take the weeds out.
Yeah, one of the proposals was to introduce another species-
Yes.
-that would come in and-
The gold bug.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
There's been, benfamic, it's basically plastic. We have tried so many things-
Yeah.
-but primarily in the swimming area, because that has been completely unaffordable otherwise. So, that works for a year or two, but then that silts over too.
Oh.
The, the barrier. So, the weeds just will get a foothold in the silt that's fallen on top of that. You're supposed to take it out every year-
Oh, really?
-which, you know, is a pretty daunting task.
Yeah.
Have you looked into sterile court?
Um, no, the state is not allowing that.
Oh.
Yes.
New York allows it.
New York allows a lot more ways.
They're very effective.
Yes. Are they really?
I use them in three different places.
Really?
Part of organizations.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I will-
And they're sterile, so-
Yeah, right, they're not taking-
So, we have a system that doesn't, you know, allow fish that size to get out.
Yeah.
It's, it's amazing.
Do you know what weeds they eat?
Yes.
You do?
Everything.
Everything?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start looking into that tomorrow. They only allowed the gold bug, which only eats Eurasia milfoil, which we don't have very much of in this lake. So, it wasn't effective. It was done, but it wasn't effective. So, basically, what we're hoping to do is to be able to do this every summer. There's only a limited window of time that we're also allowed to do it, given spawning of fish. It doesn't, the ice fishermen were a little annoyed at one point because they thought that we were ruining the, the sort of opportunities for the big pike to eat a lot, but we're like, no, actually, we're improving the quality of the, of the oxygenation of the water and of the water itself for fishing, so I don't think that's a problem anymore. And we're, we are at a point where we can't absorb the full cost of doing this without support from our community. There's no other lake in the state of Vermont that we've been able to find that either is not a municipal or state, you know, maintained and run, or has a homeowners association around it. And so, we've begun talking about ourselves and the three towns that have land around it as the homeowners association. So, we're coming to our homeowners associations and asking for you to consider helping us pay for the weed remediation. The full cost each summer is $10,000. North Bennington gave us $1,000 retroactively for this last summer. So, that's what we're interested in discussing.
And you're asking for this to be a piece of the community appropriations, or a line item in the budget?
Well, that's a good question, and I'm not sure which makes the most sense in terms of the way you operate, and I don't know. I mean, we get a community appropriation every year. And North Bennington made this a separate allocation. So, we get $5,000 a year from North Bennington, and then they added an additional $1,000 to just-
As a line item.
-support, as a line item to support. So, we come back every year to ask for that. That's not like a, a sure thing. Well, nothing's a sure thing, but you know what I mean. We have to make a special request for that. So, I'm not sure where this community would feel comfortable for us asking for that. We ask your thoughts on that, and then we'll do what you think makes sense.
What I have in front of, thank you so much for this presentation. What I have in front of me from, from sort of communications from you all is a, you know, with regards to the appropriation, annual appropriation increasing-
Yes.
-which is what I was under the impression that we're here, so I need to hear from you all about talking about that appropriation, that annual appropriation increasing, which would go to, you know, the voters to, to elect it on the ballot. That's sort of the, the premise here. So, I think that's sort of what, yeah, because it's an increase from $2,500 to $5,000 to help us cover these expenses of this aquatic weed removal.
We do have to get our signatures, which we're beginning to work on for that.
And then, of course, there you run the risk of, if people don't want to increase that, then you lose the appropriation-
Right.
-the original appropriation that has passed every year.
Ah, I see. I did not know that.
Right? Because there would be an increase to be appropriated.
Right.
It's a vote, yeah. So, they're, they're voting on whatever the amount is, to say that I would like $1,000 to remediate, you know, this such thing.
Right.
And then if everybody says no, because they're like, you know what, Zoe, you'd really only have $500, then it's not as though, yeah, it's not as though I would get like the half that maybe they would have agreed upon. So, they're just voting upon whatever will be in front of them at that, at that time.
Right.
And on the other hand, they're, they're voting on-
The question I think was to sort of double that appropriation, which I think makes sense, don't get me wrong. But I'm just like touching base on like the ask here.
Well, I, I think that we, you know, I live in North Bennington, so I'm very familiar with how, how the village feels about the lake and our requests for funding, but I'm, Erin lives in Shaftesbury, so I'm not sure what the, what you would suggest to us or, and we, we are, we are very committed to, to having the most healthy and positive relationship that we can with the communities that surround us and the people that come to enjoy the lake itself and Perrin Recreation specifically. So, we're just interested really in strengthening our relationships with our communities and, 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 you know, the, the sort of other side of that is increasing the support that we have, because there's no way that we can keep doing what we're doing without financial support as well. So, the two kind of go hand in hand, so. But yes, we are trying to increase our, our community allocation. We have a petition, and we are beginning to collect signatures for that.
So, for that, you're trying to increase it by?
We, we get $2,500 from you, and we're asking for five.
And so then, you're suggesting that we put in, as a line item budget, an additional fund?
Well, that would be a guarantee then, right, for when you put it in? So, I-
For this year?
For this year, right. And then we'd come back and ask for it again.
Right.
Right. So, from my point of view, that would be the best thing to do, because then we have the possibility of getting the funds specifically for the boat, the work of the boat, which is really a, we're taking care of a resource that all of our communities share. So, we feel like that is sort of a little bit of a separate thing than us running our programming out of the facility that we own and run. So, if that were amenable to you, I think we would move in that direction, but if you feel like that's more than we should, you know, we, it's, it's a big increase that we're asking for.
Yes.
So, you know, it's not like we don't understand that that's asking a lot. There's a lot of need out there, and I know we're not the only, you know, organization.
We're facing a very high increase.
Yes, a very difficult, yes, right. So, and I don't know if you, we need to decide that right now, or you want to mull that over and get back to us?
Give us some time.
We don't need to decide it right now.
Yeah.
I'm chiming in from, from over here.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to approve it right now, or to talk about it necessarily in a setting. I think that moving the appropriation forward to $5,000 makes sense, especially considering our goals, especially regarding this weed remediation. I think that with what's going on in our local municipal budget, we have to very seriously consider-
Right.
-if we want to add any line items in this time, because we're in a very, you know, difficult position, as everybody always is.
I understand.
But we are right now, as we will present on, on the next item of this agenda. And so, I would say that for this evening, it makes sense to, to sort of be like, yes, let's go for that five grand for March, and maybe amongst ourselves, we discuss if there's a possibility of adding any line item within the budget, which at this point seems to me perhaps not this year, but the next. That's just my personal opinion, not the opinion of the board. But just because we're sort of moving into this cycle in which we're already having to sort of make a lot of kind of really big decisions right now.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
100% counted.
And plus-
It's a, a big year for us, in a way that definitely will affect our taxpayers, and we're trying to be as cognizant of that as possible. But I think that five grand from $2,500 might make a, a step, and I, I do believe, from my personal understanding, which is limited, of course, that these, these voters would be in favor of increasing the allocation, because I think a lot of people, including myself, do use that lake and enjoy it and value what you all are doing over there. That's like my top of mind, so if anyone else wants to chime in.
I mean, Zoe, I agree. I think, I mean, I think it's dangerous, because who knows what?
Yes.
But it's more likely we'll pass than not, is my take.
Right. That sounds like a good idea.
And then you have a, a larger sum of money-
Right.
-and we can consider-
That's right.
-fussing it into the budget somehow.
Got you. I think that's great.
Oh, we're facing a lot of problems.
And also, we have, it's a 10-year permit, just so you know. So, we, we've just had two, so we have eight more years left on this particular version of weed removal. So, we are trying to also leverage other environmental groups' involvement with us in the region, so that we can hopefully take other steps to do different kinds of work on the lake to make it be around for a long time.
Why do you think of dredge?
Dredging was, would be my preference.
Yeah.
But I think that's a very-
That's a lot of entities having to agree and a lot of moving parts, so I don't know.
And a very expensive proposition, and I'm not sure where all that, those resources would come from, because the state has also shrunk its support for these kinds of efforts as well, for the same reason everybody else is. Yeah, right, exactly. We're all in a contracting kind of place, so.
And we're only one voice on it, right?
Right.
To get the consensus on it, so.
Is there, do you guys have like, is there anything going on like a, in terms of fundraising? Is there anything that we could do that's just like getting the word out and sharing with people who are engaging with the municipality's website, or with the municipality's social media? Is there like, you know, I'm asking basically like, is there a GoFundMe we can direct people to, or something like this, that we can allow our, our citizens to engage in at an at-will basis, as opposed to, you know, putting a line item in the budget? Because I bet there are people in town who would want to participate in that sort of thing, so I'm just sort of throwing that out there. Because if there is anything like that, we would love to share it on social media and put it on the website, because we in no way want to move away from any type of support, and we would love to put that in the hands of people who would like to participate, just throwing, checking in.
Yeah. Thank you so much. But currently, we just have a like donation website link that you can, people can donate to, but we're also in the process of planning our annual appeal, and that'll be coming out soon. It'll be a day-by-day-at-the-lake campaign, and that we would definitely get to you guys and make sure that we can publicize that opportunity for people to participate in.
Good.
Yeah. And there's lots of events and activities and programs going on all the time at the lake, so if you want to join in on those, or if I want, you want to link to our, you know, our Facebook, social media posts, whatever, I could send flyers if you guys want, to let you know about what's happening at the lake, keeping you informed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Really, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for listening.
Yeah.
Very good use of the-
Yes, thanks.
Thanks.
And now we're on to the second hearing on the proposed FY27 budget.
Yep. I gotta open it. Forgot to.
Is there any way for us to keep Zoe on, like to bring the budget over to the side?
I don't think so. When you're sharing a screen.
Yeah, you can sometimes minimize it.
I'll give it a try. I mean, I see her on the side.
Oh, well, now we see her. So, if you don't enlarge this-
Oh, okay.
-very much, then she's still there.
Yeah.
And you can just toggle her down a little bit. You can usually expand that.
Think you want her? Is that good? Are you trying to make, you want her bigger?
Yeah.
Okay. Oops. It's too big.
All right, here we go.
Okay. Nice screen. All right, she's up there.
Okay, okay.
Good. All right. Now, wait a minute, I have to move this over. I can't navigate this thing. Is Mike still here? Yeah, he's over there. I'm gonna stop sharing for a minute, because I got locked up. Okay. Now I can, I think I can. Oh, well, oh, okay. So, we've got a couple of-
Well, if you're not gonna be able to show the whole thing, just enlarge it.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta speak up, Zoe, so.
We went over this budget again, and, you know, one thing that was added to it in this last round was talking to the Shaftesbury Fire Department, and their next truck is going to be very expensive.
Yes.
They have one coming in 2026. So, added a few bucks to their pot for the new truck, and it kind of, you know, made the numbers kind of go like that. So, to, we, back up, it started at like 17%, then it went down to 13, then we have it down under 13, but we still have a lot of work to do here, as far as, we have so many needs this year, that I'm not sure how in-depth I'm gonna go into it this evening, because we need to show this again in two weeks, because there are gonna be questions asked and answered during that time, and we're really trying to drive it below 10%, obviously, because it's still, that's not an acceptable, to me, anyway. Increase.
A 12.94% increase-
12.94.
-in the last year.
Then there was the question of the, the raises. I mean, this one over here is the raise, if everyone got 5%, 13.49, 12.94 at 3%, it's kind of not a lot of difference.
And that's what the addition of the money for the fire department, so that's sort of why it went down a little bit less than we expected.
Exactly. But the, the difference between 3 and 5 is pretty negligible. Other considerations are, you know, two employees getting more hours, DPW requesting another guy, and the Emerald Ash Borer tree removal. Right, those are basically the things that were-
And a significant sum to the sidewalk fund.
Yeah, we had to write the paving fund that was in the red, and per the auditors, we have to replenish that, which is-
And originally, we were gonna replenish it in one big fell swoop.
Yep.
But now we're considering doing it in steps.
Yeah, that's that line here, 361, and we were chipping away at it, and he's like, put all 88.7 in there, to put it back in the black, but I can check with the auditor and say, do we have to do that this year, or can we split it up and do it over, you know, a couple of years? That's another one of the questions that we have to answer. So, what other discussion do we need to have?
I think we, Zoe, didn't we talk about wanting really to emphasize that we need, that we need public input in this next two weeks? We're hoping that people will really weigh in on things like, do you, do you think it's, it's important enough to bring down the budget increase by 3% to raise salaries by a little bit less than we had originally intended and keep them instead just at a 3% raise? What do people feel about, what are the other flexible ones?
Well, we probably want to talk to Mike about the, his request for a new guy.
A new guy, which is, what would it be without that?
Closer to 10%.
Closer to 10%. Yeah.
So, come talk to us.
Come talk. So, you want a guy?
Or a gal.
Or a gal. Somebody with a pulse.
Yeah. I mean, I started, and this has been talked about since I, since when I've started back in, I mean, you've been on the board since I've been, and it's kind of, we've talked about it every year, and it's never really gone any more than, I don't think even to me, coming and asking or talking about it or anything. So, it was kind of a surprise to me that it was brought up this much for, that the talk of it was actually, you wanted me to come here and voice my opinion. The highway crew, I mean, obviously, what, the main reason is, is, I'm trying to explain this, how- I'm trying to explain this, how, it goes through my head so much, I think about it too much, and then I, yeah, I don't know what to say, but.
You can ask any questions.
So the way this crew works is, I'm, I'm a foreman, I'm a laborer, and I'm an operator. So what do you want me to be? Do you want me to be, do you want me to be the supervisor? Or do you want me to be in the plow truck? Or, you know, like, because, so for example, is I plow a route, which is fine. I mean, they worked for the town for years. But with more demand that the public wants, that, you know, we, and adding another, the new building to plow and maintain that and stuff, what happens to me is, I'm in a route, I'm plowing, and then a truck breaks down or something, and I have to leave my route to go take care of that, whether it's to call a mechanic or try to fix it, or yada, yada, yada. So I'm not doing things that I should be doing. So I brought, well, you know, a while ago, four or five years ago, I said to the last administration that, you know, I think maybe to run things a little more efficiently, it would be nice if I didn't have to sit in a plow truck and not be able to go help, you know, or make decisions and make calls on what's going on because, so what I do is, I check the roads, and then I go right to my truck, and I, you know, I call the guys in, and then I'm right to my truck. And this goes to, sometimes I'll check the whole town, and sometimes it's, I'm skipping over things because I don't want to get behind on my plow route, and I don't want nobody else to get behind, so. So having another guy would take me away from doing, you know, things that another crew member could do, and then I could do my job and be more efficient on, you know, getting us the grants or making sure the trucks are up and running and equipment is running, you know, just the personnel stuff, whatever. So that's kind of what I've always thought about. We subcontract a lot of things out because guys take out, take time off in the summer, so, you know, it doesn't, we end up paying somebody to mow or the parks or, you know, do other things because we're shorthanded. We, you know, we got a couple guys, you know, grading roads, one guy roadside mowing, and then it leaves the odd man out. So I end up working with the guys on a project, and I'm not one step ahead of them because I've been out there working with them the whole time, and then they're like, well, where are we working next? And I'm like, well, give me a minute, I gotta figure it out because I've been with you all week, so.
So we actually lose money by being understaffed.
Yes, we do. And I was writing notes here, yeah. So it does look good on paper that we're, you know, understaffed, like, but in the long run, you're not because it takes longer for snow plowing, it takes, it's more increased overtime on the guys. I have no, we have nobody to, in the wintertime, like, going back to plowing, we have no, yeah, I have a spare guy that would come in, but that's, you know, like, if he's available or not. But if there were seven of us, I, if, you know, some, one guy has, has some issues at home right now with significant other, and he's gonna have to take a lot of time off this winter, and I don't have anybody to, and we're gonna make that work this winter, but I don't have anybody to cover. So we gotta figure that out when we get there. But with seven guys, I could jump in his truck and run and plow his plow route, you know, if somebody's sick or something. Because all the crew members would have their own route. So the supervisor and myself would be able to help out in other places there too and do my job, so. And that's what I proposed to before, and that's where we were, that's where we left off on it.
We weren't saying no to it.
No, no, I know nobody was, I just, I'm explaining.
To explain to us and to the public before this goes further and, you know, gets to a town meeting, for example, where it's harder to do this kind of thing.
Oh, I know you weren't, so you know.
And I think ideally, just to chime in, I think ideally, our idea, Mike, is to send this budget as it is to the town, but we just feel as though it makes sense for everybody to hear from you and hear why you're looking to have more help, what you need, and how, you know, how it all makes sense, and like, why we want to support that and why we want this budget to go forth with this percentage increase. And so anything that's like a significant big change, we just want people to know what it is. So it's not as though you're here tonight to defend it to us. You're just here tonight to like, let the public know, let the town know sort of what you're seeing, what you're dealing with, and why, you know, the DPW is looking for another crew member so that when they go in March to take a look at this, they'll say, okay, we know why this line item is going up by this percentage. And we're trying to do this with anything like this, you know, sort of trying to talk about like, oh, the assessor needs more hours because, you know, the reporting structure has changed, and now you have to do an assessment on a more regular basis, right? So we're trying to do this with each thing in which there's a kind of a big change, because it will be a year that adds up to a significant increase. We want each of those different things to kind of be as explicit as possible, and that's just, you're, you're part of this tonight, basically. So it's a big, you know, part of a bigger whole, not just about you, I guess, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. I was just, I guess I was just explaining it that way.
Can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
For explanations purposes? And then I know that, that there's public who wants to chime in about this, and this is a public budget here, right? Can you talk about, are there things that would go wrong that you can anticipate if this were not funded, if this extra line were not funded this year? Like, what do you anticipate coming up in this next year? What are you afraid of?
This, well, I feel like the DPW keeps getting asked to do more and more. So I, for example, I had a very disgruntled guy from West Mountain come yell at me today because we didn't go out and do something for him because I forgot, and I'm human. And, and then he apologized because he saw that we were out doing the banners. We put all the banners up, you know, the hometown banners, which is fine. We just, we're being asked to do more stuff, like, I, I mean, the park is being used a lot more. That is awesome. I am so glad to see Howard Park is being used. And, you know, so it gives us, we have more stuff to do down there. The new town, the new town office, we're gonna have to maintain that, the parking lot and stuff. So we're, the DPW is getting more and more things to do, but we're not getting any more help.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you talk more about, like, what you did this summer with the culvert project? Because it paid for payroll.
Yes, so.
Like, the cost savings of you guys doing more of that, to me, is significant.
Yeah. So in the past, in, when I first started with the town, I contracted everything out. I was handed a bunch of stuff that needed to be done, and the only way I could think about doing it was to contract it out.
Right.
So, and it made sense at the time.
Yeah.
But as I've gone, you know, and I know these guys, and I know what they can do, I said, well, we can do some of this work ourselves.
That's right.
And the town takes some of the benefits from the grant money. So instead of the grant money going to the contractor that did all the work, it's, it's going to pay for our payroll, it pays for the culverts, it pays for the equipment time, it pays for the fuel that's in the machine. So it's saving us, it's saving us some money off of that budget, too. There was, like, the whole month, there was forty thousand dollars worth of grants on Daniel's Road, and then there's two hundred thousand dollars worth of grant, I mean, yeah, a lot of it's materials, too, but, you know, and some of that money paid for our payroll and our equipment and our fuel and the equipment. So that's, that's something that we're gonna keep moving forward doing, too. The crew that we have right now, we have a wide variety of guys that can run all different types of equipment, and it helps in their knowledge to do these projects. Not all will be able to do, we'll have to contract some out, but a lot of the roadwork, a lot of that grant stuff that we're getting is just regular maintenance anyways. It's just in beggar because we're replacing more culverts and stuff that needs to be done.
Well, you're willing to do it, too, which is great, super.
Yeah, I know it was...
And you do a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, beautiful job.
Yeah, no, but, I'm fine.
Should we turn to the public? I was gonna say.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the talent that we have with this crew, and yet, they're out mowing lawns in the summertime. I know, he's, seriously, you've got people that can do grader excavators and all that sort of stuff, and all of a sudden, he says, well, I gotta, you gotta go mow Howard Park. And if you contract it, it uses probably more than...
Than the salary.
Than the salary. But that person is usually worth a lot more in the grader or in the excavator. In the summertime, he's always short-handed because everybody's taking the vacations, too.
That's right.
You'd have a full crew.
I can see his frustration.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Did you want to add to that?
No, it's totally, yes, thank you. It's, I mean, we've talked about this numerous times, too.
Anybody else?
Oh, I can chime in with Daniel's Road.
Please go right ahead.
Heard this big bracket one day, it was up there, but my God, Daniel's Road, moving these blocks of stone. And since we've, well, it's been ten years, we've been at the old mill. And that road, not all of it's paved, but it just breaks up every summer. It breaks up, and we've had all this rain recently, and it's perfect.
Yeah, the bigger storm slows the water down so that it doesn't rush onto your property like that, off the hillside, so. That's why we're, the state funds us with that type of stuff, you know.
But back to what you said, it's, that's saving money.
Yeah.
Because the road is, whatever you call it, mechanism, whatever, it used to crack off every year. It's not doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think his problem is too big. Yes, yes.
Okay, anything else?
I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, you're good at that once you get going.
Once I get going, yeah.
Zoe, did you want to throw in anything else? You're muted.
No, 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 I think that, yeah, I think this all makes sense. I just am glad to hear from Mike directly and kind of get a better picture of what you guys are facing, like, challenges you have, and hearing about like the managerial problems you have, and like, why having an additional member of staff would be so helpful, and what that would mean for the town, and also your increased bandwidth to apply for grants and to sort of manage things from the top down. And like you mentioned, that would bring in overtime because you wouldn't be in these weird positions you're in right now. Just hearing from you about it as opposed to us kind of speculating about it, that's very helpful, so thank you very much.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, and I tend, I really want to do a good job, and I get really mad when I miss stuff. And sometimes when I'm out working and doing stuff, like, I'm not, I don't like not being a step ahead of the guys, and I don't like forgetting to order something that they asked me to order and stuff, but.
Because you're trying to be two people.
Totally. I refer to a little construction company and the fact that we're regularly sending a dude who works in the office to run to Granite City and pick up wire and drive to Dorset and then go over to, no, I get it. I get what it's like to have to like reallocate sort of like talent because you're, you know, two days behind in terms of like, who's going where and who's doing what. Like, one hundred percent understand, a big part of my daily life. So, but it is helpful, I think, for people who maybe don't know what that's like, to hear from you. So I really appreciate you taking the time and joining us this evening to kind of share, so.
No problem. And I do, I do want to say something about the raises. I know that you have three percent on there, but I do know that we have a very talented crew, and I'd hate to see you lose some of these guys over two percent. I really do, because the private side is starting, the benefits are starting to get better, and they're starting to take from the towns and the state. So it's getting harder and harder to find guys to work for municipalities because of them, you know, towns and states cutting one or two percent. So you gotta remember, they gotta take care of these guys that are taking care of the roads that we're working on, too, so we gotta really think about that, too. And I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
That's great, thank you.
I saw it there.
Yes, so do I. I heard it.
Yeah.
It's a tough one, but everybody...
It's tough, but everybody, they want their roads maintained well, and, you know, we, do your taxes go up a little, you want your taxes low, they go up a little bit, but the level of service that we give you, you know, I mean, it means, it means a lot, too. The guys, they're gonna do a better job if they're compensated for it. They're just not, if it's just not, you know, the same old, same old, it's just gonna be like they plateaued, so. We, we don't get bonuses, we don't get any of that stuff, you know, it's not like we're working for the private side, but a lot of guys, and not Shasberry, but I see it, I see the emails every day that towns are looking for people because they're jumping ship over select boards or taxpayers, trying to cut, you know, what we're doing, but then they call up, why isn't my road graded? So that's...
It's called hall, too.
That's all I got to say.
That's great, you said it very well.
All right.
Well spoken.
Everybody.
Well said.
Yeah, great.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, anything more we want to talk about, about the budget in this round?
Go back at it, nothing for me. See what we can do and bring it forth next time.
Okay, where can we ask the public to please send their input on these issues if they happen to?
They can email me.
Email.
Email administrator@...
At shasberryvt.gov. If you can't remember that, it's on the website. On the website.
Good. Other business?
I'm just a nosy neighbor.
Oh, it's nice to see you.
Yes, it's always good to see you.
I looked over there to just wonder, who was it that walked out?
Ted Works. I do have to tell you one little thing. The cemetery committee were trying to put in that fence, which is turning to, you know, the usual nightmare.
Yeah.
But the guy who gave us a good price, and he can come, is putting in fence for me started today, in this weather.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, and they're really hard workers, and it happens to be exactly the same fence that...
Okay.
So if anyone's...
Which is waiting on the lead test.
So the lead test is what has to...
Yeah.
We did not have that problem.
Good.
I couldn't.
That's good.
He wants to see it.
We'll try.
Hey, you found love for being on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, other business? No. Okay, good. Review of action items.
Shave the budget.
Yeah.
Shave the budget.
Which may not happen.
Work some, work what magic that we can.
Which is looking like may not happen, and I just want to be so one hundred percent clear about that. That budget may not get shaved, this might just be a catching-up year, and that's something everybody can discuss at town meeting. But to me, it looks like a lot of things, you know, like, if we were talking about the possibility of the DPW hire being one of the largest percentages that we could cut out of this, and the DPW needs a new employee, I'm not sure that, I feel as though it's my right to do anything about that. That's something that the town should be discussing in March, frankly. Because he seems to have expressed a very clear need. And so there are some places that we can probably make some minor changes in the next two to three weeks, but some of these bigger spends, whether it's the paving reserve, which you're gonna check with the auditors about, whether it's having a new employee of the town, these are not things for the select board necessarily to be deciding. It might be that this version of the budget or a slightly amended version is something that people need to discuss, the citizenry needs to discuss in March. Because I think that the need is pretty expressed and clear, and I wouldn't necessarily, myself personally, feel comfortable removing the line item for like, for example, the new DPW hire. Personally, the paving reserve would love to hear we can bump that down a little bit, but outside of a few minor changes, I think that, that this might be something that's just a really interesting March evening.
Yes.
It could go beyond the evening, if you let it, yeah. Okay.
This is my takeaway tonight. I don't think it would be right for us to cut that line item. I think it is something that people need to discuss, frankly.
You're agreeing to?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And these, I think, I think the history is...
So, so I don't think that what we're gonna see in a few weeks is gonna be that different than what we're seeing this evening. I just think that it's gonna be, you know, a conversation about how everybody needs to think about that and talk about that and then, you know, and then understanding what the grant list will look like, which I don't think we're gonna see for quite a while. So, so our anticipation of like what the municipal tax rate will be is, is challenging this year as we move through this assessment, which is just sort of a strange year.
But a lot of the things that we're proposing, it seems to me, are in a sense, one-time increases. Although they're ongoing increases, they are, we're still playing catch-up. I mean, that's, that's the fact.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff was underfunded and for a long time. And now we're catching up.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other action items we need to put on this?
Do a special select board meeting for all the, the grand pubas.
Water.
Water, water and planning commission.
Sewer feasibility committee. For the 8th of December.
Oh, and just if anybody is interested in, in participating in the holiday tractor parade, that Art Whitman and Charlie Jenks are handling that and to reach out to them and that there will be a new post on the town website tomorrow about that.
Yeah.
And that their phone numbers will be listed there. I just am calling that out. Not, not an action item, but that should have been other business.
Okay.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good flying, Zoe.
Yeah.